It's one of the greatest experiences of my life. So, I wouldn't change it for the world. I'm just so happy right now.
From Elysian Park, I'm Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
Of the 29 officers graduating, two will be officers for the Los Angeles World Airports. As part of the mayor's commitment to connect with Los Angeles teens, he hosted another youth town hall in East Los Angeles at Legacy LA, a community-based nonprofit organization focused on youth development.
Now that we have peace, what do you need from me, from the city? What do you need me to hear and how can we be not just peace keepers, but justice builders?
It is the youth voice that often gets lost or muted. Today, we want to heighten that. We want to create a loud voice from the youth community.
From frustrations of being young, such as being judged by their peers or teachers, to finding a summer job, young Angelinos had a forum to discuss their issues and to begin a dialogue with the LAPD.
Today, the purpose is to also open up a space to talk to your police department. Because it is your police department. It has to be a cooperation, that we have to work together, that we have to be part of the community, and that we have to be a police department that, as the mayor said, you look at as your own.
This was participant Christian Topete's first time at such an event.
I think it's a great opportunity, especially that we're trying to make changes, you know, for the future.
Own this day, own these conversations, own your government, own your police, and think about what you can do to be the solution.
LAPD Chief Charlie Beck emphasized that youth should take pride in and be responsible for their own community.
Every one of you has a stake in what happens where you live. You have younger brothers, younger sisters, you have uncles, you have aunts. Their safety is your responsibility. You aren't leaders of tomorrow, you're leaders of right now. Remember to listen to each other, not just to us, to hear one another, to make those connections, and to promise to be peace keepers and justice builders.
Topete felt empowered and hopes other participants did too.
There's also a lot of youth that are, they're, they're, they're in a party not in the right steps, you know? I mean, I probably wasn't in the right steps in a lifetime, in a part of my life, but I got, I got to fix myself. So, this is, this is an opportunity for them to also, we could go out there and help them out.
To learn more about Legacy LA, visit their website, LegacyLA.org. New anti-crime measures have sent violent crime rates in Watts plummeting, in spite of a gang-related homicide in Nickerson Gardens last week. But many residents agree it will take all of them to rebuild a community that struggles with poverty, racial tensions, lack of jobs, and a lack of hope. In this second part of our special report, Anna Marcos takes a look at a community in the process of rebuilding itself.
Even the business of crime must make way for prayer here. That's the first order of the day at the weekly Watts Gang Task Force Council meeting. Residents from grandmothers to ex-gang members meet with police and city leaders to talk about anything that improves the quality of life in Watts.
The people that live in Watts should be the ones that clean it up.
These folk have been dumping this trash there.
But mainly, they strategize ways to free Watts from the stranglehold of crime and gang activity.
I know that I could drop a rifle on my shoulder, I load it, and control my neighborhood myself if I want to.
This man is upset over the gang fighting between black and Latino gangs in Gonzac Village, a smaller housing project.
We've got to bring the Latino gangs in on this, to the communication.
Gonzac has no programs like the Community Safety Partnership, or CSP, which is so successful in other projects.
We are looking to add on to this CSP program to include Avalon and Gonzac.
Police share information about a string of shootings and killings in July that affected the entire region. But the three major public housing developments in Watts, Nickerson Gardens, Jordan Downs, and Imperial Courts, have stayed amazingly bulletproof.
You guys are doing something really good, really good.
It's a community fighting to take back its neighborhoods. Police and residents say a new and improved partnership together, and meetings like this are having an impact. Some of the projects in Watts are enjoying their lowest crime rates in decades.
Watts was the worst, it's community. But now, Watts is totally turned around, big time.
But many residents know it will take all of them to rebuild Watts. That fear of the gangs must make way for strong families at home. This Father's Day event at Nickerson Gardens honors fathers in the family.
It's good to know that in the midst of our brokenness, God has called us to survive.
Councilmember Joe Buscagino, whose 15th district includes San Pedro and Watts, hopes to rebuild the infrastructure. He will invest $18 million in Watts in the next few years. Plans include a new four-screen Watts Star Theater, bringing in new health providers, renovating the Central Avenue corridor, cleaning up dirty alleys, and attracting jobs and business development in a place with few economic opportunities. There are also plans to rebuild the Jordan Downs Housing Development.
We've also done is bring in Rick Caruso, the developer of The Grove in the city. We brought his executives. We gave him a ride-along in a van of opportunities here for him and his team to invest in, and he's expressed some interest.
But Buscagino takes community building to a whole new level, as he brings his pillow and blanket to this sleepover with a family in the Jordan Downs Housing Development.
Just starting the project don't mean we all bad people. Because we're human, just like everybody else.
Why not just spend the night, live it, feel it, experience it?
Then, a second sleepover at Nickerson Gardens with a Latino family. This time, he brings his own wife and kids to spend the night.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this meal we're about to eat. We thank you for your guidance.
Watts Deputy for the 15th District, John Jones, was homegrown on Watts streets. He and his East Side Riders Bike Club are committed to building community by inviting residents to bike rides and kickball events. They often join forces with the Latino Los Riders Bike Club. The group also fixes bikes for kids and hands out free sandwiches to the hungry.
What we're trying to do is change the culture of our neighborhood. And we feel if we're getting people out, moving, riding bikes, playing kickball, walking around the park, then it changes how people think in our community.
This guy right here, he's, he's my brother from another mother.
And while Watts schools struggle to improve, four Markham Middle School students prove that Watts kids can excel. These students just won the National Math and Engineering Science Award for designing a prosthetic arm. Two Latino kids and two black kids, working together.
It makes me feel good, because people don't usually think of Watts as like winning or doing great things.
If four middle school students can do it, maybe there's hope for the rest of the community. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Several low-performing Watts schools, such as Jordan High and 99th Street Elementary, have seen test scores shoot up since their partnership for LA Schools took over in 2011. While parents and teachers are more involved and those scores have improved, they are still below state target goals. Larchmont Boulevard will soon see a dramatic new upgrade, thanks to the Bureau of Street Services. Rich Samuels has more.
Today, the area around Larchmont Boulevard and Melrose Avenue is pretty typical. It's not much of a gateway to Larchmont Village. But all that is about to change.
Larchmont Boulevard, Main Street, USA!
Fourth District Councilman Tom Labange joined with the Bureau of Street Services and area residents recently to take the first step in transforming this to this.
Main Street, USA is Larchmont Village. Main Street, USA is what we have to try to keep and create.
What the city is creating is a project to construct three eight-foot-wide landscape medians along Larchmont Boulevard, along with a gateway sign. Altogether, the project will upgrade not only the Boulevard, but complement the neighborhood as well.
For us in the Bureau of Street Services, it's very, very gratifying to be part of these projects. There are huge projects in the city, and there are great projects in the city. This is a great project. In my opinion, it is great, because it is the result of community collaboration, community participation, community vision.
The project, designed and constructed by the Bureau of Street Services, will be completed this fall. This is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The Larchmont Boulevard medians project involves three divisions of street services: special projects, engineering, and urban forestry. After years of delays, construction is set to begin on downtown LA's new federal courthouse. As Gil Reyes tells us, the project is part of a new and constantly changing downtown civic center.
One, two, three!
What's now a fenced-off dirt lot on First and Broadway Streets will soon house LA's new federal courthouse. The 10-story tower is designed to be less imposing than LA courthouses of the past.
It will generate thousands of jobs. It's going to be a beautiful building, and I think that the people of Los Angeles will appreciate having it.
Less Gothic and more green. The tower will have solar panels and other energy-saving features, enough to earn a platinum rating from the U.S. Green Building Council. And imagine here, near the entrance, a reflecting pool and public gardens. The federal courthouse will have 24 courtrooms and 32 judicial chambers.
It's our aspiration to create a landmark that is worthy of this site and of this great city.
When you think about the architecture that's here, Craig, your beautiful design will join almost a symphony of different buildings.
Situated near the Music Center, the new LAPD headquarters, and Grand Park, it's the latest project in the LA Civic Center's revival, with more changes in the works.
The U.S. General Services Administration also has plans to sell one of the old federal courthouses on North Spring Street to private developers. Proceeds would then fund a second federal courthouse to be built next to this new one. Completion date for this one, 2016. In downtown LA, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Federal judges have been pushing for additional space and a new home since the 1990s. Construction plans were canceled in 2006 due to cost increases, but were recently revived. Cost of the building: $319 million. The council turns a gag gift into a heartfelt effort to help the homeless. The mayor asks for volunteers, and the team behind the city's new website is honored. It's all this week on City Beat. What began as a traditional gag gift, when Council President Herb Wesson gave crazy socks to council members on the first day of the new council session, has turned into a drive for sock donations to help the homeless throughout the city.
Here at Council Chambers, inspired by our council president, Herb Wesson, he gave us a gift on July 3rd, was it? On July 2nd. And now, it's, his gift gives us the motivation to help others across the city of Los Angeles to pay it forward.
To kick off your sock drive, I have 150 pair of socks that are the warm white socks to kind of open it up for the council, hoping that everybody on the council will at least do that many or more.
Each of the city's 15 council districts will compete to see which office can most effectively mobilize their networks to generate the most donations. The drive runs through August 28th. The city's Information Technology Agency was recognized at City Council recently for their redesign of the city website, LACity.org, for the first time in 15 years.
As you know, colleagues, our website is often the first impression of Los Angeles for thousands of people around the world who visit our site every year. If we want to be a city that's innovative, forward-thinking, and business-friendly, we need a website that reinforces that message.
Despite a 40% staff cutback, the ITA completed the project using in-house designers at minimal cost to the city.
As the Chair of the ITGS Committee, we, we had our first hearing yesterday. We're starting to look at all sorts of ways to engage all of you, not just in, in the website, which is the critical first phase, it's the, it's the face that everybody sees, but into taking us to the backend as well, and getting Wi-Fi for the city, getting remote testimony, making the city more accessible, more transparent, and more efficient by using technology.
An initiative like this takes a village. ITA appreciates the teamwork and support that we receive from the entire city family, helping update the content of the website and get it ready for the launch.
The mayor is calling for volunteers to serve on the city's crisis response team, which provides critical on-scene emotional support and resources to families and witnesses, freeing the LAPD and LAFD to do their work.
One mayor can't save a city, and even 50,000 city employees in a time of a disaster are limited what they can do. But in every single neighborhood, on every street, every block, in every part of the city, having crisis response teams will help us if it's an earthquake, an act of terrorism, man-made or natural disaster. We can train to help ourselves in those times of crisis. So, we're asking Angelinos to join with us.
Volunteers must be at least 21 years old and in good physical condition. Serving on the crisis response team requires a seven-week training course, which begins September 9th. The application deadline for the fall session is August 23rd. For more information on the program, residents should email lacrt@lacity.org. More improvements are springing up at the Mulholland Memorial Fountain in Los Feliz. As Gil Reyes reports, the renovations mark a major milestone for LA water.
Another big splash for a local landmark. Residents of Los Feliz are spouting off about additional improvements to their favorite fountain.
Now, we are creating a special garden around it that features beautiful water-conserving plants and landscaping for all to enjoy.
The LA Department of Water and Power renovated the Mulholland Memorial Fountain earlier this year. And now, they're improving the grounds surrounding it, adding new walking paths, park benches, and educational signage. Dubbed the Los Angeles Aqueduct Centennial Garden, it will open to mark the 100th anniversary of the Los Angeles Aqueduct. That project, supervised by William Mulholland, continues to deliver water from the eastern Sierra Mountains to Los Angeles.
Water played a particularly special role in the creation of our neighborhood, which lines the entire southern boundary of Griffith Park. And the LA River Project going on just behind us now reminds us that the role of water is going to be prevalent in our future as well.
Councilman Tom Labange grew up in the area.
I don't think there's another corner where the fountain is good as this. There's a nice little one in Beverly Hills, okay? At Santa Monica and Little Beverly Hills. And where?
Champs-Études.
Oh, he's, he's going to France there. Champs-Études. Yeah, that's all right. You can go there. You go to France and give us a report, send us a postcard.
No postcards needed here. See Los Feliz's fountain up close at 3360 Riverside Drive. The new park opens in October. In Los Feliz, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
This space will also include a decomposed granite path that depicts the aqueduct's 233-mile passage from the eastern Sierras to Los Angeles. Whether you're in the mood for history, culture, music, or movies, there's something in store for you on this week's edition of Things to Do.
This Friday, August 24th, at the John Anson Ford Theater, the Pacific Ballet Dance Theater presents The British Beat, a tribute to British music and the dance styles they inspired. From the 19th century to World War II, and all the way to The Beatles, Elton John, and Adele. Live musicians accompany dancers in this unique trip through modern culture. The program begins at 8:00 PM. The Ford Theater is located at 2580 Coengah Boulevard East in Los Angeles. For more information, visit FordTheaters.org. Also on Friday, catch a new interpretation of the classic Diary of Anne Frank at the NoHo Arts Center in North Hollywood. Based on the diaries of a 13-year-old girl's experience hiding from the Nazis, this production is not to be missed. Friday's performance starts at 8:00 PM. The NoHo Arts Center is located at 11136 Magnolia Boulevard in North Hollywood. For more information and other showtimes, check out Plays411.com. And this Saturday, Cultural Collaborations is a culturally diverse night of music, dance, and storytelling at the John Anson Ford Theater. This year, the program celebrates the LA Jewish Symphony's 10th consecutive year at the Ford, featuring special guest storyteller Theodore Bacell. The program begins at 7:30 PM. The Ford Theater is located at 2580 Coengah Boulevard East in Los Angeles. Are you a Harry Potter fan? Then make sure you don't miss the Harry Potter Collection at the Hollywood Museum. This ongoing exhibit features authentic artifacts from the Harry Potter films, including costumes, wands, props, and brooms. The Hollywood Museum is located at 1660 North Highland Avenue in Hollywood, and is open Wednesday through Sunday from 10 to 5:00. For more information, go to TheHollywoodMuseum.com. And on Sunday night at the Egyptian Theater in Hollywood, it's a classic double feature, directed by Orson Welles. He was only 25 when he directed Citizen Kane, which stands today not only as his masterpiece, but as a groundbreaking film in cinema history. Welles stars in the film as Charles Foster Kane, a ruthless newspaper publisher supposedly modeled after William Randolph Hearst. Following Citizen Kane, stay forward with The Magnificent Ambersons, Welles' 1942 tragic tale of a wealthy family in crisis. The films start at 7:30 PM. The Egyptian Theater is located at 6712 Hollywood Boulevard in Hollywood. For more information, go to AmericanCinematheque.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
The LA's Best After-School Enrichment Program continues to grow and make its way into more schools. Rasha Goel has more.
For some elementary school students, their first day of school this year will be a memorable one. It's not every day students get a chance to have the mayor of Los Angeles read a story, shoot some hoops...
Skyhook!
Sing with them...
Happy Birthday to you!
We love you!
And share some exciting news about an after-school program called LA's Best.
Today, I'm very excited to announce that we're going to be expanding this program to five more schools this year.
Those five schools are Michelle Obama Elementary School, Sally Wright Elementary, Washington Primary Center School, South Region Elementary #10, and South Region Elementary #11.
Because when you go to LA's Best, guess what? You got a better chance of staying in school, a less chance of ever committing a crime, but none of us are ever going to do that, right? And I know this program well, because I've seen it firsthand.
We are so lucky in LA's Best to be able to be here for you, here for other schools, and almost 29,000 children throughout the city.
For 25 years, LA's Best has been providing after-school education, enrichment, and recreation programs for elementary school children ages 5 to 12. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
LA's Best will now be at 194 schools, serving students across the Los Angeles Unified School District. That's going to do it for this edition of LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Cindy San Luis. We want to remind you that you can catch us online at LaCityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
It is Friday, August twenty-third. I want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at ten AM. We, Madam Clerk, do not have a quorum as of yet, but there are some items we can get to. Now, I think we have a presentation that's ready to go. And also, where's Mr. Sidio? Mr. Sidio, for an introduction quickly?
Where is this?
The floor is yours, Mr. Sidio.
Is this up? Good to go? Good to go? Thank you, colleagues. I have an incredible group. As you know, you heard us announce a few weeks ago that it was Oaxacan Heritage Month. And so, we have a group that has ventured all the way here from Oaxaca. They don't even understand what I'm saying. Tenemos un grupo aquí de Oaxaca jóvenes, un grupo de músicos. Están aquí visitando para demostrar su talento musical. Quiero presentar un grupo de Oaxaca que se llama Ricon de la Marimba Oaxaca. Por favor, levántense. We have a group from Oaxaca, a music group. They've brought their talent from here for Oaxacan Heritage Month, and we just wanted to introduce them and let them and welcome them to the great city of Los Angeles, the great city that has over a hundred languages spoken and people from all over the world. This is one part of our great city.
Let's give them a round of applause. I have a large Oaxacan population in the district that I represent. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Mr. Weezer, are you ready to start today's proceedings? Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President, and it's my great honor today to stand before you today to celebrate the recent completion of this year's Nisei Week Festival here in Little Tokyo in downtown Los Angeles. And I want to congratulate them for providing a great tradition here in the city of Los Angeles for over seventy-three years. Let's give them a big round of applause. You know, the Japanese community has played an important role in the development of this wonderful city, and Little Tokyo has been a critical component of that. Little Tokyo was founded in the eighteen-eighties when the first Japanese-owned businesses were established near First Street and Central. Within a few years, a community of nearly thirty thousand had located to the area with a thriving business community. Just a generation later, in the nineteen-thirties, Little Tokyo community leaders created Nisei Week to raise awareness of Japanese culture in the unique district of Little Tokyo. And since nineteen thirty-four, Angelenos have gathered every August to celebrate Japanese customs and traditions and the positive impact that the Japanese community has had in shaping our city. Nisei Week has grown into one of the largest celebrations of Japanese culture in the United States with an array of events, exhibitions, festivals, and a grand parade where Tom Labonge was there on his bicycle that day. My family and I were also there with my young girls dressed in their kimonos and my young son also dressed in a traditional Japanese outfit that he did not want to take off for the rest of the day. But friends, Little Tokyo's history is not only part of Japanese-American history, it is part of Los Angeles history. It is part of America's history. If you want to learn about all that we are as a culture and a diverse city, all that we represent, one of the neighborhoods you must come to and truly get a sense of who we are as Angelenos is Little Tokyo. There's an awful lot of history and tradition there, and Nisei Week is an important part of that history and tradition. I want to thank the Nisei Week Foundation president for all his or hard work, Steve Inoue. Thank you so much for all your hard work. We also have with us Alan Ota and Michelle Suzuki from the Nisei Week Foundation as well. Thank you for your work. So with that, Mr. President, I'd like to introduce to you Steve Inoue from the Nisei Week Foundation so that he could introduce the beautiful court for the Nisei Week celebrations, which they were just inaugurated a couple of weeks ago, and their work has just started. So let me introduce to you Steve Inoue.
Okay, let's give Steve a round of applause. Steve, welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Weezer, for those kind words about our Little Tokyo community. Good morning, Councilman President and council members. On behalf of the Nisei Week Foundation, we would like to thank you for your support of not only our Little Tokyo community, but the Nisei Week Foundation and our Japanese festival. We've had an exciting couple of weekends, which commenced with our coronation where we introduced our lovely court. And at this time, I would like to bring up our queen, Lauren Iwata, to introduce the court.
Good morning, everyone. We're really happy to be here today on a part of Nisei Week. So my name is Lauren Naomi Iwata, and I'm honored to be the 2013 Nisei Week Queen. So at this time, I would like to introduce the 2013 Nisei Week Court. So we have First Princess Ashley Mieko Honma, Nisei Week Miss Tomodachi Megumi Yuhara, Nisei Week Princess Laura Akemi Higashi, Nisei Week Princess Stephanie Megumi Fukunaga, and Nisei Week Princess Jamie Tomiko Teragawa. Again, we would like to thank the Los Angeles City Council members and on behalf of the Nisei Week Foundation and 2013 Court, we presented you some commemorative books that we signed this year. So again, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Weezer, now, I know I heard you say they've only been sworn in to office for two weeks, but, young ladies, I want you to know that the wave you have down. Even though it's only two weeks, you look like Princess Di or something. You guys are great. Before you go any further, I'd like to call on Mr. Tom Labonge.
Thank you, and Mr. Weezer, thank you for the great job you're doing in Little Tokyo and all the districts in the new areas. So special. What was so special about meeting the representatives this morning is they're also representatives from great universities where they attended. Cal State, Long Beach, who's Long Beach State there, right there? Cal State LA, LA State, right there? UCLA, a couple UCLA there? SC, through SC, and I want to say Cal State UC Riverside, I knew that. And that's just the wonderful thing about the dedication you have as young people and going to school and being graduates and contributing. Every year, the team from Little Tokyo at Nisei Week stand tall, so I wanted to do that. Also salute our sister city, Nagoya, Japan, Los Angeles' oldest sister city, and know how special that is. Let's say, I want to say, "Kuwichimo." I want to say, "Thank you." Arigato! There we go. All right, arigato.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labonge. I know Little Japanese from the time I spent there. I used to work at a video store in Little Tokyo for about four years during high school. And before that, I have a long resume. I used to work for the Raffu Shimpu, the Japanese newspaper, delivering it in my neighborhood of Boa Heights for many years. But I have a long history with Little Tokyo as well, and I just think it's a great community. I want to thank the Foundation for the work they continue to do, not only to promote Nisei Week, but throughout the year, promote a number of cultural events. So on behalf of the City Council, I wanted to present this to the Foundation, thanking you for a successful Nisei Week 2013. Much success to you and to all the court. Congratulations. You guys are used to this already?
Again, let's give them one more round of applause. Mr. Weezer, thank you so very much. Is Mr. Buscaino around? So it's my understanding that you and I think Mr. O'Farrell.
Yes. Fantastic.
So I'd like to quickly turn it over to you and Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and all the beauty of Los Angeles, Nisei Week. And now, we're gonna introduce to you some of the key members from the Feast of San Gennaro, the Italian feast that's held every September, right behind the Jimmy Kimmel Studios. And I have Councilmember O'Farrell joining us. This event takes place in his district. Joining me here is Aunt Patenza, Frankie Capatelli, Marji Higashi, who's here, they're here to promote the feast to take place September twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth in Council District Thirteen. And of course, in celebration of the Year of Italian Culture in the United States of America, we're here to partner with the Feast of San Gennaro. They do amazing things. They give back to nonprofits across the city of Los Angeles. They promote the arts, and they promote the Italian culture across the city. And I'd like to introduce Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, the thirteenth, to say a few words. Mitch, this is the thirteenth year. By the way, I was instrumental in putting on the first year and working with the board thirteen years ago. And just last night, actor Joe Montaigne, a dear friend and a friend of the feast, was filming in downtown San Pedro, and we reminisced about the feast and what it does to highlight our traditions and culture of the Italian community. Ladies and gentlemen, Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell.
Thank you. Thank you. Of all of the mixed blood I have coursing through my veins, Italian is not one of them. However, I'm so pleased to be here as an honorary Italian for today, and I'm so pleased that the Feast of San Gennaro is on Hollywood Boulevard every year since 2002. I first met Aunt Patenza back in 2006, and we've had a great partnership ever since then. And now that I'm councilmember, I will go there and enjoy the feast with bells on. So congratulations, Feast of San Gennaro, and welcome back to the thirteenth district. Thank you.
All right. And of course, our mayor, Garcetti, was instrumental in supporting the feast each and every year, and we hope to see him this year as well in September. I'm gonna bring up Aunt Patenza or Frankie, wants to say if he works? Frankie Capatelli, he's the president of the Foundation who gives back from the benefits and the proceeds from the feast. Frankie, we love you.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon. No worry, Councilman. Anybody that goes to the feast at San Gennaro that day automatically becomes Italian. Everybody attends the feast that day will possibly have Italian blood in them when he walks out of the place. We're just very happy to be in Los Angeles as a first-generation Italian-American. We're very proud to put on this festival. We're proud to show the people of the Los Angeles our faith, doing things for charity, for showing off the Italian culture. So we brought today, we brought today some cannolis for everybody on the council. Of course, my grandmother says that if you eat a cannoli, you all will do the right thing. I don't know what she meant by that, but I'm gonna give you the cannolis, guys. So we thank you very much for the city of Los Angeles, for your help. Without the city council and the people before this council and with Joe and, you know, Eric Garcetti, who was our councilman before, we could have not had this feast. I hope everyone comes out and enjoys it.
Yes.
It really, really is a wonderful festival, and we thank everybody for the city of Los Angeles for taking part of it and helping us out. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Grazie a tutti. And we're sponsoring a bus from San Pedro on that Saturday, and we hope some of our colleagues do the same. Yes, Aunt Patenza. And we got goodies. We got goodies.
Buongiorno, everyone. As a third-generation Italian-American, that's all the Italian I know, unfortunately, but it doesn't stop me from loving my culture and wanting to share it with everyone. And as part of the festival, we have every district, we have a little goodie bag to prepare you, because it's the last weekend of September, and we always wind up with the hottest day of the year, so I'm sure we'll have it again. So we have a couple of things. When you come to us, we have our San Gennaro T-shirt with a to-eat list. So if you're not sure what to eat, you have to work your way through the feast and check off, from cannolis to basta vazul to pizza, all the good stuff. We also have a recipe book. From those of you that don't know, Jimmy Kimmel is one of the founders of Starting the Feast. He started in his backyard, and he's been instrumental, as well as with Marji, that not only do we have his grandma and my grandma on the cover of our recipe book, but for those of you, this is our anniversary, recipes from all of our San Gennaro family members. So those of you that cook or want someone to cook for you, we want you to enjoy this. We've got pizza cutters, we've got chip clips, and most important, because we want you guys to know, not only do we share our culture with the community... to know, not only do we share our culture with the community, but it's very important for us to give back. So we have information on here to tell you, under the San Gennaro Foundation, all the different local charities and cultural groups that we reach out to and support. So if you're not sure, we have a San Gennaro giving tree, and we're so proud that in the 12 years we've been here, we've given away over $1 million to charity, and that's because of your help, and we appreciate that. And save the date, September 27th through 29th, and we're adding a new charity to us this year, and I hope you all come. We're doing a blood drive all weekend and a bone marrow drive with City of Hope, Cedar Sinai, Children's Hospital, American Red Cross. So we encourage you to come down, everyone, no matter where you are. They really need our donations, so that's, we hope you'll all join us to eat food and give back to the community. What more? Grazie.
Grazie, grazie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Joey B.
Oh, hold on, she's got socks, I see.
Oh, for you.
We got socks, Mr. President.
But I do have a member that wants to speak, but let's wait for the sock presentation, which you need to mention every day. Okay, then I will, as you figure out what you're going to say about the socks.
Mr. Busca, you know, I just want to come out of the closet as a fellow Italian-American. My great-grandparents, Paolo and Elizabetha, came from Abruzzi, Italy, and I am proudly 25% Italian, so I want to make sure I get to participate in the festival. I will say, since we're in a competitive mode with the socks, I had some of Joe's mother's delicious tomato sauce the other day. I got to say, though, I'm going to be bringing in my mother's Italian meatballs around Christmas, and I think I can beat you.
Sauce, ragu, gravy, what is it? Sauce, ragu, gravy?
We call it sauce.
Sauce, very good, very good. So, you know, they are true to their words, colleagues. They brought socks for our sock drive that expired, it's going to end next Wednesday. So thank you so much to the San Gennaro Foundation. Who do you want to credit this to? Maybe we'll get these to CD 13, I would say, since the event. I'll cough them up and give them to CD 13, since the event is in Mitch's district. Thank you so much, and make sure you donate your socks today.
Thank you.
We've got cannolis for everyone.
Alrighty, thank you so much.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Quickly, I'd like to turn to Tom Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have with us today Ferdi Luisa. Where's Ferdi, right here, all the way from the French Caribbean? Where are you, Luisa? You came, I have her stand up and be recognized. Very good, Ferdi, good to see you. Excuse me there, give him a big hand, welcome there to Los Angeles, there, our special thing.
Okay, before we proceed, we have two very special guests with us today, three, really, three very special guests, one of which needs no introduction, but we have three special guests with us today that are high-ranking members to Senator Dianne Feinstein's staff. We have her chief of staff, Jennifer Duck. Jennifer, wave at all of the folk. Give Jennifer a round of applause. I know you're almost applauded out, but we've only got a few left. Also, we have Trevor Daley, who's the state director for Senator Feinstein. Give Trevor. And I like Trevor, he just bounced right up. Yeah, you know how to do this. And we have the distinguished gentleman from Los Angeles, one of the first hires of Dianne Feinstein, our own Percy Pinkney. Give Percy. Percy, you have been threatening to take me to lunch for 32 years, and it hasn't occurred yet, so I may call you on that. But anyway, in the next few minutes, we're going to have Ms. Duck and Mr. Daley and Percy in the back of chambers to give members an opportunity to go back, introduce yourselves. They are here because they want to meet us, want to get a feel for the things that concern the city of LA. So I think when we have an opportunity to have, you know, chief of staff, state director, and Percy Pinkney here, we as a council should take advantage of that. So with that said, I'm going to ask if Mr. Sadio.
I just want to echo the importance and the significance of having the senator's staff here. Of course, Percy Pinkney has been an icon in Los Angeles as the senator's representative. He's referred to sometimes kindly as the senator in the senator's absence, and it's very important for us, Mr. President, to have them here. For example, this morning, we had a press conference on the river, and this gives us an opportunity to share with them our perspectives, our point of view, and the need for us to collaborate, both at the local, state, and federal level. So I encourage all of us to greet them and take advantage of this very precious time we have with them. Welcome to City Hall.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. Okay, if I could ask Ms. Duck, Mr. Daley, and Percy to, could somebody escort them to the room in the back? Trudy from my staff will do that. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could we call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bond, and Buscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corretz, Corcoran, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, West, and 14 members present a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Englander moves, Fuentes seconds, next.
Committee resolutions for approval.
Corretz moves, Price seconds, next.
Mr. President, would you like to run through the agenda?
Yes, I would.
First, there's requests to continue item 15 to August 28th.
Without objection.
Items 1 through 3 are items known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that item 1A may be received and filed as much as the property owner is, the property is owner-occupied.
Okay, without objection.
And there are cards on items 2 and 3.
Okay, do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 2 and 3.
And which cards, again, I didn't hear?
2 and 3.
Okay, so let's vote on item 1?
Item 1 has been received and filed.
Okay, I thought it was just 1A, so the entire? All right, so let's move on to the next section, 4 through 9, I believe it is.
Yes, items 4 through 9 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members, specials, items 4 through 9, seeing none, let's prepare to vote on these items. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Thank you. Next, items, I believe, 10 through 13.
Yes, items. Yes, items 10 through 13 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on items 10, 11, 12, and 13.
Okay, so we'll hold all of those items. Let's move on to the next section.
Item 14 is a closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, I do. Next.
On the continuation agenda, item 16 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, that item is now before us. Do you have cards?
No cards.
Members, Mr. Englander.
Wish to receive and file.
Speak into the mic.
Yes, I did, it wasn't on, sir. But yes, 16, we just wish to receive and file, Mr. President.
Okay, so without objection, we will receive and file that item, Madam Clerk. And that brings us where? Or is that it?
Mr. President, do you wish to recess the regular meeting?
I think we shall.
To go into the special.
And go into the special.
Item 17 is an item which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes required for consideration. There is request to continue this item to September 3rd.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. So now, can we go adjourn this and go back into our regular session?
Yes, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Sadio, did you? Okay, what else is on today's agenda?
Mr. President, that takes council to items called special or general public comment.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I know we have item 14 scheduled for closed session, but I believe, based on information given to me by the city attorney, we can take this item up in open session. And with that said, I'd like to defer to Mr. Paul Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. President. On item 14, I'd like to make a motion to give direction to the CAO to finalize and execute the letter of agreement between the city of Los Angeles and IBW Local 18 pertaining to the 2014-2017 Memoranda of Understanding, and to direct the city attorney to finalize the settlement agreement in Romero versus City of Los Angeles, including creation of a new pension tier, and to give the CAO and the city attorney authority to finalize all associated items and bring those items forward to the appropriate bodies.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran.
Pardon me, Deputy City Attorney Michael Boston. Pardon me, sir. Just to clarify, it would not be a final approval. The items would still have to come back to the city council after they have gone through all appropriate committees.
Okay, that's fine. With that said, I again want to thank all of the members of the council, all of you, for your hard work on this item. Believe it or not, we've talked about this item so much. Mr. Corcoran, there are no speakers.
Fourth with when we vote.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, for giving me a heads up. But anyway, Mr. Corcoran, we've talked about this so much, there are no speakers in the queue. Again, I want to thank the members. Now, we've already taken, if I'm correct, Mr. City Attorney, public hearing on this item. Do we have to take it again?
Pardon me, if there are cards, we should have public comment on the item, yes.
Then I will take those cards, beginning with Mr. Sax. Mr. Sax, I just needed to check out. So, Mr. Sax, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. It is a shameful, shameful agreement that's been manufactured here by the city council. First of all, the hard work by the city council. We have, what, five new members who were elected in July, took office July 1st. This contract has been talked about for 18 months. Second of all, but really, a good part of this was the work done by Ron Galpern and the fact that he found like 600 different instances where DWP workers could increase their pay. And what's really amazing about that, when you think about it, is when DWP workers were involved in Striplegate, where they were caught on TV, driving and drinking and driving, coming from a strip club, nobody really investigated any of the other amenities that DWP has. And in less than two months, less than two months, he found 600 additional pay abilities to increase their pay. So for the 18 months that the regular council members were here and their previous, the predecessors, what were you doing? Now, we've heard settlement about the reciprocal payment on the retirement funds, but we haven't heard about it being paid. And we've heard settlement about how it's going to save all this money. But if you check the records and you look at the transfers that were made, it's $10 million less one fiscal year. So 30 times 10 million is $300 million that it's going to cost the city in not getting that additional transfer funds. So think about that when you have a pothole on your street. Oh, we have a plan for that, $3 billion in revenue taxes or something.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Mr. Corcoran, we needed a second on your motion, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bloomingfield to rise.
Second the motion.
Okay, so we have a second, we're good to go. Again, Mr. Englander.
Just, I just tried the cannolis. Oh my, they're incredible. They're amazing.
Joey B made them himself. Anyway, again, thank everyone. Thank the neighborhood councils. We have Jay Handel here. Good job, J U Terry Gomes and Dr. Weissman, and so everybody was involved, Miguel, Jerry, Sharon, so I can't thank you enough. With that said, Madam Clerk, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Per Mr. Labange, fourth with.
Fourth with, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mitchell, if I might. I'm going to turn the chair over for a bit to Mr. Englander, the president pro temp of this body.
Okay, I believe we're on item 12 for Mr. Corretz, and we do have a speaker with some, several speaker cards. Do you wish to open first?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for opening public comment and for hearing this item today. And I thank Council President West and also for his leadership on this issue. And when we have speakers, we've been asked to have limited to one speaker per group, if we can do that. But if we could first have everybody stand up who's here in support of this issue, just so we have an idea. And thank you all very much for being here. As many of you know, earlier this year, the federal government sequester became effective. And for those of you who don't know what the sequester was, it was supposed to be an automatic spending cut, so dramatic that Congress would never let it go through, and they would have to have the intelligence to come up with a response. Of course, predictably, they didn't, and so we've had a number of draconian cuts that have gone through. Our seniors faced a $1.6 million cut due to the elimination of the senior meals program, and we responded, and we were able to guarantee that through our budget, none of those cuts would take place. So we didn't eliminate 1,000 senior hot meals that were delivered and 2,000 meals for seniors in some of our centers. During our budget hearings in May, I introduced a resolution calling on Congress to restore this funding to the Older Americans Act. And immediately, as a member of the Budget and Finance Committee, I worked with Paul Corcoran, who I thank for his help and leadership on this issue as well. I thank all of you in the audience for showing up and taking your time and providing support and representing community organizations that do so much for our seniors. I also thank our general manager, Laura Trejo, for leadership as well, and I look forward to continuing to work with you on the tough issues that we face in this arena. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Corcoran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to thank Mr. Corretz and all of the activists who are here today for continuing to be so vigilant in demanding an end to the harm that's caused to the American public by this sequestration, and particularly to our most vulnerable seniors. All of you who were here will recall that in our budget deliberations, we were faced with the prospect of cutting off the senior meals program in this city because of sequestration and leaving some of our most vulnerable citizens of this city high and dry, without a basic meal to get through the day. And thankfully, this council acted to set aside sufficient funding to maintain that senior meal program in spite of sequestration. We were able to save that program. We were able to save that program. But it is up to the federal government to act. It's up to the federal government to show the leadership that we expect them to show in making sure that we're able to continue to protect our seniors who have given so much of themselves to this country. And now it's time to make sure that our country continues to take care of them. Thank you, Mr. Coretz.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Mr. Bonin.
I want to thank Mr. Coretz for bringing in this resolution. And I want to thank Mr. Krikorian and the previous council for acting to save the senior lunch program during the budget deliberations. I have a number of folks here from the Felicia Mahood Center in my district, where the Jewish Family Services is continuing to provide meals. And they brought in today a number of paper plates with handwritten messages explaining how important this program is to them. And just to humanize this, I'm going to read just one of them. "I am what is called food insecure. About two weeks out of the month, I don't have the money to buy as much food as I would like. Now that I've turned 60, I know I can eat at least one meal per day at the Felicia Mahood Center, as opposed to fasting for days on end or eating at homeless sites. This is saving this program in last year's budget makes the difference between people going hungry and people eating. Our seniors deserve the best, and we need to get the federal government to act." And so, Mr. Coretz, again, I appreciate your leadership on this issue.
Thank you very much. No other speakers on the queue. We've got general public comment on this item. Sandra Samuels. We're going to have a minute on the clock on each one of these. Orlando Estrada, followed by Arlene Torlemke. Torlemke? And I apologize if I'm, you're going to correct me, I'm sure, without a doubt. Good morning.
Good morning. Honorable members of the council, my name is Sandy Samuels. I'm the CEO of Batesedec Legal Services. For the past four decades, Batesedec has provided free legal service to low-income Angelenos of every race, creed, orientation, and nationality. But we focus particularly on advocating for the rights of the elderly and the disabled. Funding provided by the Older Americans Act has been an essential economic cornerstone of our work. The OAA allows Batesedec to reach hundreds of seniors annually at community-based centers throughout the city and county of LA, from Watts to Northridge and Volgwood Park to Pacoima. Also, through elder abuse prevention and consumer protection workshops and self-help courthouse clinics, we reach thousands more, helping the elderly and disabled and the families that care for them to support their independence and quality of life. None of this work would be possible without the Older Americans Act and without the partnership of the Los Angeles City Department of Aging, which has worked valiantly, along with agencies like Batesedec, to maintain services to seniors despite years of drastic budget cuts.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for your efforts to restore justice to Los Angeles seniors and the family members who support them.
Thank you very much. Orlando. Good morning.
Good morning, distinguished councilmen and members of the city council. My name is Orlando Estrada, and I'm a senior advocate with St. Barnabas Senior Center and the Hollywood Center. I'm very concerned about our seniors, including myself, that some of us are only eating one meal a day, which provides just insufficient nutrition for seniors because of the health problems that we have. Thank you. What we need to do is to have this consideration that you provide for all our seniors, particularly since we were the ones in the '60s, '70s, and '80s that contributed so much funds to our general government. And with that in mind, I'd like for you to consider very seriously where we're going with this and how you can support us. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you very much. Arlene, followed by Amos.
Is that me? Good morning. I'm Arlene Torlemke, and I coordinate the Older Adult Education Program for Los Angeles Unified School District Division of Adult and Career Education. I'm proud to be here today with one of our teachers, Adrienne Omaski, and students from her class trained for another career commercial acting. This group has been instrumental in bringing to light and raising awareness of one of the most egregious forms of elder abuse, the elder abusers, scammers. The course is one that we offer through the multipurpose senior nutrition centers throughout our city, among other courses that focus on health, technology, and civic engagement. Two years ago, we formed a partnership with the City of Los Angeles Department of Aging to deliver health literacy-focused, evidence-based instruction through the multipurpose senior centers. Counsel is to be commended for putting the brakes on the erosion of services.
I don't want to cut you off, but I just got to keep it at the same time for everyone, otherwise.
Anyway, your swift action is appreciated. Thank you.
Terrific, thank you very much. No, thank you. Amos Fried, followed by Sherry Revert.
Good morning. I'm Amos Fried, President of the City of Los Angeles Council on Aging. On behalf of the Council on Aging and the seniors of Los Angeles, I would like to thank Councilman Coretz and also to Rosendahl and the City Council for today's resolution supporting green statement of funding of Older American Act. The number of seniors in Los Angeles is growing exponentially. In the United States, 10,000 seniors turn 65 every day. Programs and services for seniors are being cut at every level at the time when there are more and more seniors needing help. And hunger is one of the top issues facing seniors in Los Angeles. I'd like to thank you for providing city funding to help make for the sequestration cuts to funds that come to Los Angeles from the Older American Act. Your help allows necessary programs and services to continue among the most important affecting seniors.
Again, I got to ask, I got to ask you. If you've got it in writing, you can submit it as well, if you'd like. I just, I don't want to cut everybody off. I know you've come a long way, but we don't want to lose a quorum either.
I got that.
Yes.
But I think the public consistently is having a little trouble. So stated in the beginning, because it's, they're trying to read, so I know it's tough.
Absolutely, yes, it is. And so, I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Laban. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Sherry Revor, Director of Advocacy and Outreach for Partners in Care Foundation. We just wanted to bring up this morning that the success of the Affordable Care Act and California's Coordinated Care Initiative are both predicated on the availability of a robust array of long-term services and supports, exactly the services provided by the Older Americans Act. So it's more than imperative that the Older Americans Act funding be restored to at least its pre-sequester levels, if not funded more amply. So we thank you for your serious consideration of this resolution.
Oh, thank you very much. Ida Talia, followed by Craig Jones. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ida Talala, and I'd like to say the determination to cut the meals from the most desperately needy people in this city is an act of hostility. I am so happy that you all have restored this and worked on behalf of those who really cannot be here. I also speak from experience, having had the assistance for a while from the St. Vincent Meals on Wheels. It is so crucial for seniors to have this. The withdrawal of food support for an already aging and impacted population will cost more in terms of health. The price at the human and budget level is far too costly. Thank you for your input and support. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So Craig Jones, followed by Sherry McCoy.
Yes, my mother Patricia Jones is 70 years old. She's in the 8th district. She's very concerned. She asked me to come down if I want to speak, talk about this. She's very concerned. And her concern is that at the local churches, you'll find a large number of elder constituents in the lines. It's like about seven or eight churches on Normandy. My mother, she goes to bingo. She's really concerned. And the problem is that not enough attention is paid to the seniors, to senior citizens. I take care of my mother. I cut the grass. I do other services for my mother. She's a senior. And some of her friends do have to go to the local food bank. My mother's concern is that this city council will always act to protect she and her friends, those that are senior citizens and those that are becoming senior citizens. We want to thank you for your time and your attention upon this pressing matter. My mother, she's in the 8th district. She's been a homeowner for over like 35 years. She's an old college graduate from Baylor High School in Dallas, Texas. And she really, thank you for your time and your services and paying attention to she and her friends. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Sherry McCoy, followed by Stop Senior Scams Acting Program, but didn't have a name. Looks like Felicia Mahood. We're representing the multipurpose. Okay, please, good morning.
Yes, good morning. My name's Sherry McCoy, and I'm with the Stop Senior Scams Acting Program that meets through Felicia Mahood Senior Center in West Los Angeles. And I want to thank the city council for this resolution to support funding for senior meals throughout Los Angeles. As a member of the Stop Senior Scams Acting Program, I have seen firsthand the importance of providing wholesome nutritious meals for seniors at dining centers around Los Angeles, such as Claude Pepper Senior Center. If these meals were to stop, it would be tragic indeed. For some seniors, this is the only hot meal they get for the day and possibly the only social interaction that they have as well. So these meals are vital to the health and well-being of our seniors. And I believe we have a moral imperative to take care of our elders in a matter that is fitting with the respect and dignity that they deserve. It's the good and right thing to do. So I commend you on this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm the one who didn't put her name down. I'm Francine Lyles. I'm representing Felicia Mahood also. But I wanted to tell you that I'm fortunate. I live with my two sons, who cook for me. They talk to me. They interact with me. I'm very fortunate. The people who are, the seniors who are still receiving meals through the programs, they're fortunate also. So I'm here to ask you this morning to make sure that they continue to be fortunate, that the meals will continue, because for many of them, this is the only thing that they have. And the meals not only nourish their bodies, it nourishes their spirits, it nourishes their souls. They have friends at the places where they go to eat, and they pay for the meals. Not a lot, but they do pay. The senior group, they've done their part. We need to do ours. And so I urge the council, I thank you, first of all, for everything that you've done, and I ask you to continue to support the meals program. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Sheila Volpert and Sheila Moore. It looks like it's two names on one card, I believe. Trying to save paper.
Exactly.
Efficiency.
And time.
That's right.
Thank you. I'm Nancy Volpert, Director of Public Policy at Jewish Family of Los Angeles.
And I'm Sheila Moore, Director of Senior Center Services at Jewish Family Services.
So we just wanted to say thank you for this resolution and for your efforts, Councilmember Coretz, Councilmember Krikorian, Councilmember Bonin. All of you have really been incredible in your support for seniors and for senior meal funding. We appreciate the fact that your efforts will help, perhaps, spur the federal government to take a second look at this. And we appreciate the encouragement you will provide to our federal representatives to stop this unfortunate and callous way of balancing the budget. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Two people with 20 seconds still left on their clock, Mr. Laban. That's efficiency. Dawn Casey Lovelace, please.
I'm Dawn Casey Lovelace. I'm the New Civic Engagement Coordinator at St. Barnabas Senior Services and the Los Angeles Aging Advocacy Coalition. St. Barnabas Senior Services serves older adults in both mid-city and Hollywood, providing an array of social services and home-delivered meals at 14 sites throughout the community every day. The Los Angeles Aging and Advocacy Coalition brings together individuals and organizations and public agencies to preserve and protect and strengthen the quality of care for older people, their families and caregivers in Los Angeles County. And on behalf of the 4 million seniors in Los Angeles, we at St. Barnabas Senior Services and the Los Angeles Aging Advocacy Coalition would like to acknowledge the council's intention to support and sponsor legislation and administrative action to reinstate the Older Americans Act funding. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Our final two cards, John Walsh and Arnold Sax. Good morning, John.
Good morning.
How you doing today?
Pretty good.
Fantastic.
HollywoodHighlands.org. You know, just flip through one and a half years of blogs. Let's get something straight here. I want to get a, oh. This has nothing to do with Meals on Wheels. This is, what they've written here is to tell our lobbyists to tell the Republicans in the Senate to end sequestration. That is all it does. I didn't hear anyone. Who is responsible for this? Vicious, racist, anti-Semite Mitch McConnell, who even the right-wing Kentucky voters are about to get rid of in the latest polls. And just for the record, I believe there is only one Republican on the city council, and that is Mr. Englander. It's a Republican thing, and when someone harms you, don't get up and play this white middle-class game. Attack your enemy, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Great, thank you. Our caucus meetings are very quick. Arnold Sax, good morning again.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. I believe Mr. Councilman Weston mentioned in part of this meeting that Dianne Feinstein's staff was in the council chambers. And you would think that with state legis, with federal legislation on your menu here, Dianne Feinstein's staff would want to be in council chambers. Makes somewhat of a connection there. And this addresses the Older Americans Act funding, which could be 10 million pages, because it's federal government stuff. And out of those 10 million pages, maybe six would address the meals program. So there's a backfill someplace for the city council to come up with funding. Where would the money come from? Well, when you address some of the sources of revenue that aren't addressed in council budgets, such as AB 109, excuse me, not AB, AB 1240, pipeline revenue, bus bench revenue, all the sources of revenue that come to council offices and not addressed in council funding.
Great, thank you very much. All right, that'll conclude public comment. Seeing no other members on the queue. One other member on the queue, Mr. Coretz to close.
I would just like to ask that, in addition to supporting the resolution, that we move the CLA report as well. And I thank the council for their support on this item.
I'll be the action with no other members. Open the roll and close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
14 eyes. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you all for coming to testify on this matter as well. Madam Clerk, what does that take us?
Item 2, cause special for cards.
John Walsh, followed by Mr. Herman.
Now, that show those Republicans, thank you. That show those Republicans. These guys voted against it. Okay, let me tell you, this is another liquor license. For convenience and for necessity. Now, we have, as you know, there's going to be a big 2020 story tonight. This is the hit-and-run capital of the world. 92% of those who hit and run are drunk. How are they drunk? Because they bought alcohol for somebody you gave a license to. Okay? Is it a, is it a...
Is it a coincidence that we have more liquor licenses per square mile and hit-and-runs per square mile than any place in the United States? No. And these garbage up here, and I'm allowed to call you refuse, political refuse, not one of you will vote against this. And it'll be an Hispanic that will be killed or a minority, another minority.
Great, thank you very much. Stay right there, Mr. Walsh. You've got other cards. We're going to go ahead and, we'll have you up. You've got three more minutes for the council meeting, so we'll put three minutes on your clock for items 11, item 3, item 2, and item 13. You also have one on item 15.
Okay.
Rapid fire.
Number 11, this concerns the Los Angeles River. You're doing a good job on the Los Angeles River. Unfortunately, if you take a look at that park, it is the least-used park in Southern California. Now, I know none of you take the Pasadena Line, but it goes right over the LA River. It passes by the LA River. The park is empty always because you have made the park, Hispanics and minorities unwelcome in the park because the white people, the rich white people that live on the other side, don't want minorities in their neighborhood. That's the reason you're talking about that. Now, on number 13, and stay tuned to a public comment where I'm not muzzled, these are our final maps. That's fine. And remember HollywoodHighlands.org for what I can't say here. And remember, I don't need all the seconds. I don't use this for masturbation. I use it for communication. So I'm wrapping up and getting leaving. Everybody else, get out of here one minute and 45 seconds earlier than you would have. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Great, thank you very much. Now we've got Mr. Herman on items 3.
Mr. President.
Yes. Oh, Mr. Labange.
Just a point for Mr. Walsh. I go to that state park, and I'm proud of its diversity, and people walk by, maybe not in the midday, hot day sun, but in the evening, families from out the center of the city, diverse families use that park. So I wanted to correct Mr. Walsh, who may be on the goal line, but you're welcome to walk around at any time you can. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Labange. Mr. Herman on items 3, items 2 and 13. You're no longer in the building, not wishing to speak? Okay, so we called all your items. We've got speaker card, we have speaker cards, Mr. Sacks on items 11, 10 and 11.
Is this a new policy for the city council where they're considering multiple items but not voting on them? I would like to point out on the river, a couple of things. A, back in May 1st, 2013, a motion was presented by Councilman Labange and seconded by one of my favorite councilmen, Ed Reyes, regarding the Los Angeles River Revitalization Corporation to implement the vision of the Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan adopted by the city council in 2007. So you have a master plan that was adopted by the city council in 2007, yet today's action involves ranking projects for the LA River ecosystem restoration feasibility study. Well, would that be part of the LA City Master Plan, or is this a different master plan that needs to be addressed? And part of that, there is no financial report, financial analysis of the report. Por qué? You're doing a study. Don't you have, I don't know, consultants to consult with that would be able to assist you in what it would cost to do this? It doesn't really make sense. On REAP, again, it's the use of personnel and the number of homes to be monitored. There was a story that it takes, what, 50 years for trees to be trimmed? How long does it take to go through the 700,000 homes that are under the REAP program, that are multifamily homes that could be responsible, part of the REAP program?
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes your time. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and open on all those items except for item 11, which we are going to hold. We've got one comment, one member wishing to speak on item 11. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you. On item 11, Ms. O'Farrell, I wish you, I wanted to speak on that.
Sure, just real briefly, thank you, Mr. Chair. Item 11 is really the culmination of seven years of a very vast, comprehensive study by the Army Corps of Engineers and the City of Los Angeles on the future of the river. There are a number of alternatives that the federal government is considering in terms of improvements at the river and restoring their riparian and natural habitat. And we will speak as one voice, one city voice, supporting an alternative that is the most comprehensive. And this falls on the, is the result of a history of work at the LA River that started many, many years, decades ago, really. Back in 2002, we formed the Ad Hoc River Committee, and my predecessor sat on that committee, was chaired by Councilmember Ed Reyes. The master plan was adopted in '07. Now we are ready for this next and most ambitious phase, and that is actually taking away the concrete at the Los Angeles River and restoring the habitat to the tune of hundreds of millions of dollars of investment, of federal dollars. And it will restore the location at the confluence and beyond where this city was founded. So I urge my colleagues to support this. It's going to be the most visible improvement at the Los Angeles River in its history since it was channelized back in the '30s, '40s and '50s. So for more information, you can go to larever.org, and I urge my colleagues to support this resolution. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, not surprisingly, I rise in support of this resolution, but I'm frankly concerned about how much the Army Corps of Engineers does without strongly considering our input. Back in May, as part of their vegetation management plan, our beautiful Sepulveda Basin Wildlife Reserve was clear-cut of 80 acres of plant shrubs and trees, which they said they did to curb criminal activity. But in reality, the most criminal thing that happened was the Army Corps of Engineers bulldozing 80 acres of our wildlife preserve. Where there was once a forest of coyote bushes and elderberry trees, there's now dirt and stumps and twisted branches. And so effective, inclusive vegetation management doesn't begin with a bulldozer and herbicides. It begins with outreach. And I'm concerned that that has not happened in the past, but this resolution calls for that. Effective river planning begins with input from elected officials surrounding the river, from people that live around the river and will live and work and recreate there. And while we definitely need to protect the city from more extreme floods that the climate crisis will likely bring, we also need to restore the river's ecosystem to its fullest potential, and hopefully we will do that here.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to rise in support, Mr. O'Farrell. Unfortunately, Mr. Corretts, there wasn't an error made out in Sepulveda. But in the long-range vision and change that is taking place, and it's not just in the Los Angeles River, in the Tahunga Wash, up in Little and Big Tahunga, Mr. Fuente's district, all of us got to take advantage of this side opportunity there. This city was founded on the river in 1781 when 44 people came from the Mission San Gabriel to the banks of this river. So it's good steps. Other parts of the region, other parts of the country have a direct involvement with the Corps of Engineers on our recreational uses. Even in Sepulveda Basin, tremendous uses. Even this summer was giving permits for people to take canoeing down the river. So there's a change. There was a challenge that would take place in Sepulveda. That was an error, but let's not discount the effort of the Corps and what they do so many times. So I wanted to rise to give a little love with a little to our friends from the Corps of Engineers. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Sadio.
This morning, we had a very successful press conference. Later this morning, we spoke to our senator. This is an incredible opportunity. I want to thank my colleagues, both Tom Labange and Mitch, for their leadership this morning. We need to do all that we can to bring our community together. We were joined by our assembly member, Jimmy Gomez, representatives from our senator, Kevin DeLeon. We need to do all that we can to bring all the resources that we have to weigh in, to make sure that we get the optimum of funding so that we can revitalize the river, not just for its environmental purposes, which are significant and essential and imperative, but also for the economic vitality that the river can offer to all of us in the city. We can make this one of the great assets of our city, one of the great icons of the city, not just something in the Northeast, but something that is shared by everyone in the city like other places, like we think about our oceans, our mountains, like we think about the observatory. Those are all great assets, iconic for the region, and we should do the same thing for the river, and I encourage all of us to join in this motion.
Great, thank you, Mr. Sadio. No other speakers on the queue. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you very much. I believe that takes us to Special 1.
Yes, Mr. President, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, can you speak to the findings?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. It's my understanding that an accessory building to a single-family residence has been illegally converted into six or more living quarters. The living quarters contain numerous life safety violations. Current people are occupying the premises. The property owner made a, the property owner made a commitment to remedy the problems, but recently and after the posting of the agenda breached the agreement. The lack of utilities, there's continued life safety issues, and it's my understanding there's an emergency, emergency conditions for the tenants of the unapproved location. And this motion is to allow for relocation benefits for those tenants.
Great, thank you very much. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on the findings, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Krikorian, did you wish to speak?
Well, I'd like to read it, so, no.
No, not yet, okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to read it on the fly.
All right. We'll give some time of a brief intermission. Ms. Martinez, would you like us, would you like to tell us how you're doing? Sorry to put you on the spot. If looks could kill, okay, I'm sorry. Mr. O'Farrell, did you wish to speak on something?
No.
Joe Busciano never has nothing to say. So, Joe, can you entertain us with song, please?
Oh, well, you know, sock drive. Plug the sock drive.
So what we're going to do is we'll go ahead and hold that item right now. We're going to go ahead and start general public comment. We'll come back to it, okay? So with general public comment, if we could, Sid, you're up, Sid.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning, Sid.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Sadio and Mr. Busciano and Mr. Price. Yesterday's meeting at the chambers regarding the motion of the historic area, which is 13-0658, and with Mr. Huizar's direction, that motion was delayed. We appreciate that. So we can look forward for the next meeting so we can come and discuss the matter at hand. I also today have with me a DVD that is basically a production of Houlihauser, which was done approximately 11 or 12 years ago, where that particular alley was just starting to get a facelift. We will pass it around after I speak. I will give it to the Sergeant at Arms to give one DVD to every member for them to watch and to see what was that alley like and what it is today and what it could become tomorrow with the blessing of all the councils and with Mr. Huizar's direction. Council members, we've tried for the past three and a half months diligently to bring Mr. DeLijani and his representation to the round table, as I was requested by all the parties, from Mr. Huizar's office, from the City Public Works, Mr. Cantor, and also the San Vincent owners of the building. I worked diligently. I extended my olive branch to them. I think three and a half months of being polite and to bring them to the table is wearing thin. A one man, one family with their wealth should not be controlling a direction of a street that lives depend on. So please, Mr. DeLijani, be respectful to the council. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Richard Robinson, followed by Donald Crohn. Richard, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, sir. Mr. President, members, grace. One of your MTA operators asked me last night, she says, why isn't there the cross and the county seal anymore? She wanted to know how long it had been there. It'd been there for a long time. It was taken off the county seal a couple of years ago. I also tried to explain to her that the work that's being done here is very important. She has this antipathy to politics. We get the word politics, politician from the Latin word, politicus, of the people, la raza. The word comes from the Latin word, politicus. Politics means of the people. So around this horseshoe, I've observed for years, some of the most dedicated people in the largest city in the United States of America. I see hope, peace coming around this horseshoe because a lot of money is coming. We're ending the war. Don't forget, one day at a time.
Great, thank you very much. Donald, come on up, followed by Raul Claros Augustine.
Good morning.
Bon entago.
Welcome.
Thank you. I would like to address something very specific, and if I have enough time, move on to something slightly more general. The specific thing, I did actually have a chance to speak with Councilmember Huizar just before this all started, and he did say, well, actually, his, I'm not sure if he said it, I think he said it himself also, but his assistant had said that it will be looked into. But there is a building going up on Fifth and San Pedro that their permit has allowed them to basically take over a lane of traffic. I think it's a parking lane and an actual lane of traffic with no allowance for people to actually walk by, for a sidewalk there. The public transportation in that area runs west down Sixth Street and, or rather, east down Sixth Street and then back west down Fifth Street. So a lot of times, people in order to get from where they got dropped off to where they need to be picked back up, have to walk down that block. And coming from the west side of the block, it is necessary to walk all the way down to Sixth Street, cross the street, and walk all the way back down to Fifth Street through what is constantly a large crowd of people. There are a lot of people that literally live out there. This is the way the laws have been set up. They've got nowhere else to go. They've got nowhere else that they can survive. A lot of these people haven't figured out how to live anywhere else. This is their homes. So I'm not going to ask that they move. But right, but when I left there this morning, the police officers were ticketing people left and right for trying to get across the street in a more reasonable way. And somebody needs to address needs to address that. And, okay, I got 10 seconds left, so I'm going to try to cover my one other thing. Wall Street here is part of Skid Row. Why don't we make a place for people to actually live outside on Wall Street?
Great, thank you very much. I've got to keep it all equal for everyone else as well, but I do appreciate you coming. Thank you very much. Raul, good morning.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Raul Claros. I'm the president of the Latino Coalition of Los Angeles PAC. I'm here on behalf of the Collaborative in Pico Union, representing St. Thomas Church, our local business association, the El Salvador Corridor that represents over 100 businesses in Pico Union. On July 3, there was a sentencing order to stop the immediate practice of the inhumane activity at Dane Han Mortuary. Since this sentencing order has passed, this illegal business continued to store dead bodies, burn bodies, and conduct services for families by falsely advertising that they are open for business with no worries. Today, we are here to ask the city attorney for some accountability, his office, Mr. Don Koczek, and also Mr. Dave Schefter, to please meet with the community. Both of these gentlemen were invited to a community meeting, which we would like to thank CD One's office. Thank you, Councilman Sadio, for your office attending that meeting, as well as Mayor Garcetti's office, who attended the meeting. Yet, both city attorneys' representatives were not there. At this point, nothing has been done to enforce the law. Today, we're asking for some specific requests, humbly. We're asking that the business stop immediately, that the city attorney's office pull the county records to demonstrate the illegal practices since the sentencing order in July 3 that will show numerous of businesses continue. We also ask for a face-to-face meeting with your representatives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Augustine? Good morning, sir.
Augustine Cevala from Echo Park, a 30-year resident of Echo Park, and I come here to talk about the proposed injunction, gang injunction, in our area. This is just another continuation of gentrification. Mr. Foyer would be better served if he would put an injunction against the banks, who caused more damage to our city, our country, than anything else in any gangs. The solution for the gang issue is jobs and recreation, not injunctions. The last time there was an injunction situation, let's look at the Ramparts scandal. That was caused in great part because there was gang injunctions, and the 18th Street Gang was targeted, and some of them were killed, were shot, and look at what happened. If the people do not stand up against this, the LAPD will run wild and be able to do what they want. This is the situation we have, and, you know, we're tired of this gentrification movement in Echo Park, what has happened. This is another way around the issue of getting rid of Mexicans, Latinos, out of Echo Park, and we object to it. It's a very racist type of injunction that's being proposed, and a lot of people in Echo Park are up in arms about it. There was a demonstration at the city courts on Wednesday morning, a lot of people from all over, and we will stop this situation. And I'm glad that the LA Times came out and backed up that situation also. And Mr. Foyer, last night, he came on the radio, trying to come out and show that he's tough on crime. As in the past, he used to be a liberal, and he was okay. He was accused of coddling criminals. Now he's trying to come out and be tough on crime. He's being tough on crime on the Mexican, Chicano people. By the way, we are not a minority. The minority are white people.
David, is it Lugo? Trying to read your writing and apologize. Good morning, sir.
Morning.
Question. Mr. Lugo does not speak English.
You can ask the Sergeant-at-Arms. He doesn't speak English. We bring the translator up for him as well.
He needs to have an interpreter. I'll interpret.
We've got an interpreter. We'll take care of it. Thank you very much for your assistance there with him as well. Appreciate that.
My name is David Lugo.
I'm here to speak. I live in District 13, or speak about District 13. There are a lot of problems that still have never resolved, and this is under the administration of Mr. Mitch O'Farrell. We want this problem to be resolved. There are a lot of problems with the sidewalks in Echo Park. Especially on Sunset. A lot of people are getting injured when they walk on those sidewalks. About eight to 10 people have been injured. And when the injured people present claims for the medical services, and they present a claim to the city, the city presents a lot of obstacles and does not really listen to their needs. What we would like to ask this new administration is for you to please repair the sidewalks in Echo Park, because they're in very bad conditions. Also, what we would like to request is to put up signs at the park in Echo Park, because a lot of people walk their animals, and unfortunately, they don't pick up after their animals. We want a cleaner park. We don't want it to go downhill as far as state back conditions. Also, regarding the injunction Mr. Cevala mentioned, what we would like to ask is that innocent families are not profiled just by their look with other people. Also, we would like to say that criminals and delinquent people come over to Echo Park. And they come to harm our residents in Echo Park. And we don't want any blame to be placed on the residents who live in Echo Park just because of their physical appearance. And to close, I want to say that we feel very proud of Mr. Mitch O'Farrell. He's our representative, and we ask you to please do a good job. I would also like to thank Councilmember Huizar. For helping us in trying to find a solution of the vendors, street vendors. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mitch O'Farrell, again. He's a wonderful representative for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mitch O'Farrell is a wonderful representative for all of us. Thank you very much. Mr. Majeski, if you can keep it down in the back of chambers, please. Thank you very much. So now we'll go ahead and turn to the special once again. Oh, we've still got one more card for public comment, but we're actually out of time on public comment. We had 15 minutes for public comment. We're going to lose a quorum. So we've actually completed general public comment. We're going to go ahead and note those cards. We'll go ahead and note those cards. We had 15 minutes for general public comment, as required by the council rules, but for, in an issue of losing quorum, we don't want to lose a quorum. So we're going to go ahead and take on the people's business. With that, we've got special one, and we've got the findings on that. Mr. Kokorian or Mr. Labange, did you still have any questions on that?
Fine, we're good, we're good.
Okay, then we've got, City Attorney, Mr. Labange is going to present the findings.
Excuse me, Mr. President. Council should first vote on the special one motion.
Okay, your special two. On special one, let's go ahead and vote on the special one. On the special one, we're going to go ahead and take the special one first, before we go to special two. So, Mr. Parks.
Yeah, special one is not Mr. Labange, it's the one dealing with the housing.
I apologize, yes. That's correct. Thank you very much. I'm sorry. If you're going to disrupt the meeting and yell in the meeting, we're going to ask that you leave the chambers. That'll be your first warning, whoever's yelling in the chambers. Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Parks.
Okay, if special one is up, I'd like to have this Housing Department rep come up and just give us a very brief statement as to why, we've already had the findings, but what the conditions are, and what we're trying to correct.
Good morning, honorable counsel. My name is Jeff Paxton. I'm a chief inspector for the Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department. Pardon me. This particular building has six tenants that do need to be relocated. It's a very dangerous situation. They have no power, no fire early warning system. It was built without permits, so it doesn't have proper emergency egress, and they're elderly and one handicapped. So there's a total of six tenants that need to be relocated, and since they have no electricity, they're actually burning candles now, and that even heightens the danger of it.
And the landlord's not been cooperative?
No, the landlord may or may not be Bank of America. There's some issues about somebody coming up and saying that they actually own it, and we've run out of time. We need to move.
Okay. Let me ask the final question, is what do we do about that building once you move it?
It will be under the jurisdiction of building and safety, and if I were to venture a guess, their abandoned building team would probably start working on it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Colleagues, we ask for an I-vote on special one, to move these six families from an unauthorized structure where they are in danger and creates liability as far as the landlord not being cooperative to fix the building. So we'd ask for an I-vote on special one.
Yes, I do hear somebody in the public yelling that we did have a public comment on this item, and that is absolutely correct, Mr. Sax. We do. And we have no other speakers on the queue, so we have a couple cards. I would like to take Mr. Sax first, since he's been so patient and he's sitting so close to the microphone. Mr. Sax, come on up.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. So we hear from the Housing Department that this may be owned by Bank of America. Would that put it under the auspices of a lighted-conditioned home, falling under the city's ordinance of $1,000 a day fines? That's never really been enforced since our now-elected mayor brought the motion up in front of the city council, what, three years ago? Give or take six months? And why not? And when the city council and the city pays for this relocation, as they've done previous times, I believe it happened in Jan Perry's district once before, will they get reimbursed from whoever owns this property? Bank of America says it, maybe theirs, you don't know. What about a violation from the prosecuting attorneys here?
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns a special one. This is something that was not on the agenda. We had to run and put it in a card. We certainly back Mr. Parks, and I'm sure you're going to reopen public comment. You have never invoked a 15-minute rule in the past 25 years, and now you would vote because of this, John Walsh.
You're off comments, sir. If you could stay on comment. Okay, that'll conclude your time. Thank you very much. Don't disrupt this meeting, please. If you walked away from the mic, that concludes your time. Thank you. Special one, seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Thank you very much. That brings us to special item two by Mr. Labange.
And, Mr. President, the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
All right, and we'll take special one forthwith without objection. Mr. Labange.
Members, with technology now, thousands of people are visiting in a neighborhood that has substandard streets, no sidewalks. This is in the Hollywood Hills, below the Hollywood side. At a recent community meeting, it was communicated that they didn't want DOT in their neighborhood, and this is to ask them to get there tomorrow, because it is a serious situation. I ask for an I-vote on both. I thank you.
Those will be the findings. Are there any questions on the findings? No questions? We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes, one no.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and open it up for discussion.
Call for an I-vote. Thank you.
Okay, there's no speakers on the queue. So we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Fourth with.
Fourth with, super fourth with. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. That concludes all the agenda items. Madam Clerk, what does that take us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
We'll go ahead and post and refer those items. Thank you very much.
That clears the desk.
That clears the desk. Okay. Do we have any announcements? Council members, any announcements? No? Any adjourning motions? Mr. Labange. Okay, please, all rise. Everybody in council chambers, please. All rise for adjourning motions. Mr. Labange.
If you're not, you've got to stand for adjourning motions if you're in chambers. If you're able-bodied, we need you, as rules of decorum, we need you to stand and rise for adjourning motions, or you can leave the chambers.
Mr. Sax? We're going to ask you out of respect that you stand up, Arnold. We respect you just as much. Okay, thank you. Mr. Sax, one day, we'll stand for you as well. Mr. Labange.
Thank you. Roger Korsberg passed. He was a great commissioner for the Los Angeles Memorial Coliseum at its time of its most need. After the 94 earthquake, he led the effort, along with others, to restore it, to bring it down, as it had that gap between the high-numbered rows. He was a wonderful man who was born in Los Angeles, and in fact, his history with the Coliseum is, when he was eight years old, he was there, he found a wallet, and he returned it. It had $50 in it, and eight tickets to an SC game. With that, when he was eight years old, he was given a special pass to sit on the 50-yard line. He was much loved by his family. He was a force in trying to bring the NFL back to Los Angeles. He is survived by his wife, and daughter, and son. I ask be adjourned in memory of Roger Korsberg.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Keretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Alex Friedman. You may not have known Alex directly, but in some ways, you knew him well, because his son is LA City Fire Commissioner Andrew Friedman. Andrew is a great civic patriot, of course, is involved in many regards, is a leader in the Jewish community, and the president of congregation based in Naftali. His father, Alex, lived a long life, passing away at the age of 92, having enjoyed many, many years of loving family, joyous civic participation, business productivity, and professional success. And that might not have seemed possible during the Holocaust in November 1944, when Alex, at the age of 23, was marched off to a train in Dachau. He was born in Hungary, the youngest of six children in an observant Orthodox family. He and his family had been made by the Nazi invaders to wear yellow stars. And he was soon placed in forced labor until the day came when he and others were loaded into cattle cars and shipped to Dachau, where he endured, on the way, he endured several things, including being barely fed and severely punched by a guard. But before they reached their destination, American troops arrived and liberated the prisoners. He returned to his Hungarian town of childhood, one of an estimated 30 to make it back, of 1,500 Jews who had lived there before the war. His parents and four of his five siblings were all killed at Auschwitz. The surviving brother, Naftali, was liberated and would live with Alex until passing away in 1987. in 1987. They did not live alone, for Alex soon met Eva Goldman, who spent more than a year in Auschwitz. They married in December 1945 and had their son Andrew in April 1947. In 1949, when the communists came to power in Hungary, the family tried unsuccessfully to escape to Czechoslovakia before settling in Budapest, Hungary. Several years after the Hungarian uprising, they escaped again, walking all the way to Austria and arrived in Los Angeles with no money and no English to speak of. But they were survivors, they were industrious, and Alex began repairing typewriters, saving money, and eventually buying convenience stores until he had a number of them, and as real estate investments as well. His wife passed away in 1998, but they had established a wonderful family with their son Andrew, four grandchildren, and 15 great-grandchildren. Alex attended services at congregation based in Naftali on La Brea Avenue, and so his passing was recently mourned there by his family and many friends. Alex was resilient and loved life, and so he brought joy and inspiration to our city for many years, and his memory will continue to do so for many years to come. May he rest in peace.
Great, thank you.
Well, Mr. President, I knew the Friedman family, and Alex always had a smile to survive the Holocaust and all that life in such tragedy, you say, a 30 out of 1,500. But his bright spirit that we always saw him on, rest his soul. And he was always involved with the Hungarian Memorial, right there at Sixten Park View, every year, right there, so special way. God bless his soul.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. Today, I'd like to rise and adjourn in the memory of Pat Wiggins. I believe that Paul and I served with her, Gilbert and I served with her. Curran, did you serve with Pat at all? Yeah, because she was elected to the Assembly in 1998, and then after that, I think in 2006, she was elected to the Senate, and in 2010, she resigned because of medical, because of a medical condition. She was just a great human being, had a phenomenal personality, was a pretty tough soldier, and she will be, she will be missed. She was a phenomenal, started out on the Santa Rosa City Council and just kind of made her way up the pecking order. I was very disturbed when I heard that she passed away at the age of 73.
Mr. Sadio.
Let me add to that. She was a robust person. I think that's the word you were looking for. Big personality, big person. You enjoyed her. She had a little problem hearing, and so she was always very loud-spoken, and so...
She was.
And being loud-spoken and then blunt and direct, she was a real character, a very, to be partisan, a very solid Democrat, someone you could always count on. The person who, even though her district was very conservative, the northern part of the state, the forest, the trees, the more conservative areas, she was very willing to reach out, take votes that were difficult, take risks to her political career, and vote for the right things. And so, she was a wonderful, wonderful woman. I was sad to see her leave the floor. When she left, she was ill at the end, and Godspeed and God bless her.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn today in memory of Barbara Mott, who passed away peacefully on August 17th. While she never lived anywhere other than her native Los Angeles for more than 89 years, she traveled the world extensively. Bambi, as she was known by her late husband, Joe Sine, was a beautiful, was as beautiful as the inside as she was on the outside, a lover of nature and wildlife enthusiast. She cherished time in Maui with her family more than anything. She'll be missed by her daughters, Elise Sine Spilker and Nancy Sunken, and her granddaughters, Audrey Spilker, Joanna Spilker, Erica and Emma Sunken, and her brother Melvin Brown. Those wishing to honor her in her memory, please consider donation to Hope for Paws, Planned Parenthood, and Green Peace. May Barbara Mott rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Adam Burton Jr., who was born in December 1926, passed away May 2013. Adam enjoyed a lasting boyhood friendship with Jackie Robinson that extended into his adult years. After graduating from high school, World War II was nearing its end, and Adam was drafted in the US Army Air Corps at the age of 18. Adam served until the end of the war in 1946. While serving in the Army, a buddy of his introduced him to his sister-in-law, Marion Rollins, and who later became the mother of his three children and his wife for 49 years until her death in 1998. As a young man, Adam was very involved in politics. He was an active member of the Vermont Square Democratic Club and also ran for the eighth district seat in 1963. Although he was not elected, Adam caught the eye of LA County Supervisor Kenneth Hahn, and in '64, he was appointed as the Chief Director of the Federal Model Cities Program. Adam was also an important player in civil rights. He was present with Dr. King in the Voters Registration March in Selma, Alabama, and was a dependable resource for Dr. King and Los Angeles Movement. Adam remained a key political figure in LA County until his retirement in 1977. After retirement, he continued to share his wealth of knowledge and experience with elected officials as a political consultant. Adam is survived by his wife Drew, his daughter Leslie, sons Kevin and Brent, who is a city firefighter, stepson Booker and Frederick. Food and services were held at Inglewood Park Cemetery.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, I ask that we adjourn this meeting in memory of Barry Dancher, who was born in 1942 in Pennsylvania, went to school at Washington University, where he received a bachelor's degree in government. He later went to San Francisco State, where he received his master of arts degree, and went on to a very impressive career as a writer and producer. He was involved in many CBS Network specials and movies of the week, including The Exchange Student, My Dissident Mom, which had Martin Sheen, The Girl with the Crazy Brother with Diane Keaton, and many others. He wrote many novels as well, including Second Chances, The DNA Conspiracy, and those were the days. He was also an important part of production on several plays, including The Triumphant Heart, Bastard Dynasty, and Evening at the Theater with John Wilkes Booth, and Lenny Rides Again. So, he contributed a great deal to the cultural fabric of Los Angeles and, in fact, our country. From 1965 and 1967, during the Johnson administration, Barry worked as a labor economist in maritime administration in Washington, and later, his career path led him into teaching, and he worked for many years with the Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Student Internship Program, giving young people greater opportunity to succeed in this business as well. He is survived by his life partner, Judy Price, whom many of you know, one of the leading community activists in the San Fernando Valley, as well as her daughters Christina and Kimberly, grandchildren Chelsea, Danica, Brianna, Mateo, Nicholas, and Sydney, brothers David and Philip, and sister Doty Graham. He will certainly be missed, and I ask that we adjourn in memory of Barry Dancher.
Great, thank you very much. Any other members? Great, that'll conclude council session. We're adjourned. Have a great weekend. And, Mr. Wesson, thank you again for your leadership in landing...